Okay, the hearing is now in session and is being recorded. My name is Laura Hart and I'm the hearing officer. Today is May 16th, 2024, and the time is 7:05. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment on proposed rules in OAR Chapter 690, Divisions 8, 9, 300, and 410. In addition, in addition to presenting oral comments at this hearing, anyone may submit written comments until 5:00 PM on June 14th, 2024, which is the close of the public comment period. You may send comments to Laura Hart at Oregon Water Resources Department, 725 Summer Street Northeast, Suite A, Salem, Oregon 97301, or email wrd underscore dl underscore rule dash coordinator at water dot oregon dot gov. This information is also printed on the last page of this frequently asked questions handout, so you don't have to remember all that. It's on here, address, email, information. Comments received after 5:00 PM on June 14th, 2024 will not be reviewed or considered by the agency unless the agency decides to extend the public comment period for everyone. The department will not respond to questions during this hearing. After the close of the public comment period, departmental personnel will prepare a staff report, which will be available from the department. Okay, so I'm going to call people, I think, two at a time, since we have two seats and we can just go one and then two and then call the next two out. So we'll start with Kevin Gill and Emily McIntyre. We have to test it to make sure.
If you turn it on.
Turn it on and we're live.
Okay, it's on.
My name is Kevin Gill, I'm a flouser wellbling here in Southern Oregon and also the Oregon Groundwater Association. I appreciate the opportunity to give public comment. I do want to make a comment about the diagnosis of dry wells. What our finding is up to 20% of the wells that are diagnosed as dry or not dry, there's obstructions in the wells from homeowners trying to install their own pump equipment or installing incorrect pump equipment and over pumping the wells, causing a collapse. Also, plug screens and liners, so not all wells are labeled dry or dry. I just wanted to make that comment. Also, water levels are actually, according to some of the data, the state has in the hydrographs from observation wells, are stabilizing this year, actually rising as we've had good recharge in the form of rain and snow in the mountains. Prior appropriation in Oregon does already protect senior water users, so existing law that's already in place will do exactly what some of these rules were intending to do. The state's mission of beneficial use without waste is a, is a good statement, but it would, in order to do that, we need good policy, we need good stewardship, and we need to make good decisions. And that would take into account a variety of stakeholders. So it's our recommendation that we do a more thorough study on what we're facing here, and in particular, in our area, a road basin study that hasn't been done, and then we pause the rulemaking so we get it right with the water allocation project. So it's our Oregon Groundwater Association and my recommendation in this group process rulemaking to make a better decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Emily McIntyre, State Representative for District 50. I'm thinking about it on. I am here tonight with some comments that have been provided to me. I represent this district and a lot of people, and a lot of concern over how these are moving forward, which I think you're going to need to hear tonight. So I'm going to run through some of these. I'm not going to read it word for word, but these rules are not easy to understand, they're not easy to put together. That's, that's one thing. Throughout this entire process, I think, as was just mentioned, we already have the ability to do a lot of the things that are already, that are being made in these rules, and I'm not sure why we need the new rules. It was just meant to be maybe for timing and things like that, but we already have the current ability and we're making some pretty broad changes to what we currently have, and there isn't a lot of understanding as to why. Also, the department has previously indicated that proposed rules are prospective in nature and will not serve an impact to regulate the existing uses of groundwater. Yet, there are examples, Example 690-009-001, subsection 2, it says, "These rules apply to all wells as defined in ORS 537.5159 and to all proposed and existing appropriations of groundwater." So right there, it already says that it is applying to existing appropriation. As has been stated before, I am sure, and in previous comments, we have multiple different basins. We are not the Harney Basin. The Clamath Basin is not the Harney Basin, and Clamath Basin shares the basin with Northern California, an issue all its own. To take our current statewide water system that has worked, maybe not in the best of ways, especially in the Harney Basin, has worked for well over 100 years, and to change it now without actually considering, especially with the scientific data that we have, without having a more regionally based solution, just doesn't make a lot of sense to me, why we would do kind of an archaic one size fits all rule for a state when we have so much more data and ability to manage it so much differently. There's other things in the rules that I think are just not clear. In 690-008-0001, subsection 9B, it says, "If water level data are insufficient to perform either test in, for a given year, then the department will presume that the groundwater levels are not reasonably stable unless..." I just have some concerns with having there be words like presumption, or maybe, or shall, rather than it being very clear, very specific definition on what we're actually going to be looking at. I will submit the rest of these for, for review, rather than read them on here so everyone can have more time, but just to also throw out there, there, if there were some changes made based on the comments tonight, I think you would get a lot more support throughout the state. Obviously, I don't think that this is going to be stopped, though I would love for it to be and be redone, but you're getting a lot of really good information from people that are trying to give you insight, and listening to what they have to say and making some of these changes will, will make a huge difference. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I've got Glenn, and I have a maybe down for Jim and Naomi Powell. Are we still, you're good? Okay, so then I've got Holly Morton. Yep. Keep each other company. Okay?
Yeah, I'm Glenn Barrett, a rancher over from Banans, Oregon. Have irrigated pastures, and I'm also representing Waterfly, and I have testified to the requirements and been somewhat involved with your process, but I really think we should start over, we should establish a new division within existing administrative rules addressing a regulation of groundwater perspective basis. By changing definitions, it affects current, I believe it'll still affect the rules on existing water rights. I don't think we've set up a strong enough firewall, and by, by having a new division could do that clearly, even though it would somewhat change the, as we were told tonight, the changes in the Deschutes River Basin. I think that can be more easily done and be more clear about it. The presented rules are included at best. Very few individuals may be able to gain full context of the rules as presented, and there's too many references and cross-references. And throughout the rulemaking process, the department still has not been clear and clearly defined or identified the problems with the current administration of existing authorities such as groundwater areas, designation of groundwater, limited areas, commission authority to withdraw areas, further appropriations are tools that the department can still use, and I don't think it's been clearly defined why those rules aren't working. You've mentioned Harney County going into a critical groundwater area, and therefore you have to basically buy back 2,500 acres of irrigated ground, but you still have tools built regularly. I think the future regulations must be more on a site, specific site basis as per site, as opposed to one size fits all, and I just, again, highlight the existing synergies between various basins and regions of the state that too general of a approach with using models and whatnot will not work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly Morton, happy to be the chair of the Josephine County Republican Party. I just have to say right off the top, when the government comes and says, "We have a problem, and we have developed an organization within the government to solve the problem and tell citizens what to do and how to solve a problem," it tends to terrify the community. And right off the top, I can see some conflicts of interest that I'm concerned about. I'm just going to bring up one, and the rest of them all under my dress and writing later. But the one that I see, and I brought up earlier, is the marijuana grow situation. It seems to be that it's going to be a conflict of interest because the state generates revenue from the marijuana industry. And yet, the marijuana industry, in my opinion, is part of the problem, a significant part of the problem. Certainly in our own neighborhood, it's a part of the problem. And I'm wondering how the state is going to handle that. Are they going to be willing to give up the revenue that comes in from the marijuana industry in order to control the adverse effects of the industry? So that's something that I think is kind of a Rubik's Cube, one of many terms in the Rubik's Cube where this is concerned, and I think we do need a lot more information in how, how the state is looking at that. And I got a chance to talk to Justin, very nice guy, bright guy. We rattled it around a little bit, and I have his card in my pocket, and as that information sort of gels in my mind, I'm sure I'm going to get back to him and ask more questions, but I'm identifying that right now as a potential conflict of interest that needs to be addressed in the rulemaking process. Who's actually going to pick up the tab for the changes that are required? The citizens or the people who are improperly using the water?
Thank you. So I have Kevin Christman and Jack Fay. You may have to turn it on.
Hello, Kevin Christman, I'm resident for Jackson County, and I was in quite a few of the the sessions where they were implementing fire maps that were happening. This has a lot of similar overtones to it, where it's a appointed agency body that is in charge of regulating sovereign property rights, and it feels like it's too complicated of an issue to be solved as a one size fits all, like the gentleman before was mentioning, and that when, when they were confronted on the university studies and these, these graphics and these impressive maps, and they, they were asked the question of, "Have you actually visited any of the properties that you're pertaining to?" And they hadn't. And so, boots on the ground of understanding properties. I have my own best interest in mind when it comes to my property. I want to take care of it, I want to make sure that I have water, I want to make sure that my, my grounds are, are secure against fire, that my house is protected, and that for a government agency to be dictating what I can and cannot do with my property, it's a slippery slope of a very complicated system that creates a complicated bureaucracy that I just feel like this needs to be rethought. It's, it's being put forward in a way that doesn't feel like it takes everything into account, just like we're talking about different, different water rights that are being used or being stolen, or it, it's just too complicated to, to have a one size fits all approach.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jack Fay from Ashland. Thank you for allowing me to make public comments on the proposed groundwater rule changes. I'm here in support of the proposed rule changes. I've also electronically submitted a letter through the Center for Biological Diversity, which provides much more detail, so I, I will have very brief comments that we also get supportive.
Hold the mic closer to your mouth. Even from here, I can't hear you. Speak up.
I got it the first time. As I understand it, groundwater levels continue to fall at an alarming rate in many areas of the state. For that reason, I would ask that the department also implement additional provisions to the rules that address sustainability now, as opposed to just in the future. That would be for the protection of this valuable resource, people in Oregon, its wildlife, and the environment. Accordingly, I would ask that the proposed rule change be adopted along with additional restorative provisions to address the current conditions adversely affecting sustainability for groundwater. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like I've got Christopher Hall and Bob Hunter.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Hall. I'm the executive director of Water League, and our organization engages the public in water stewardship. The first thing I'd like to say is thank you very much for all the hard work you and all the other staff members have done. This is a huge job. It's filled with a lot of concern across the state, and I think the way that staff at the Water Resources Department has done, has handled this, has been exemplary, and there are a lot of people who are very good friends of mine, people who I know who are on different sides of the issue in this regard, and the thing that I really appreciate the most is just the decorum and the way that this rules process has moved forward. And I think despite how divisive some of these issues are, we are still able to, at the end of the day, work together to make Oregon as good as, as it can be, and I think that's a real, like, achievement. Seventy-five years ago or more, Frank McCollough was given the job, along with a number of other people, to come up with the 1955 Groundwater Act, and in that act, they, the legislature voted to ensure that all water in the state of Oregon, not just surface water, but groundwater is also a substance that belongs to the public. So unlike the dirt on your property, unlike the minerals that are, are there, the people who own property do not own that water. That water is flowing just like a stream, whether it's on the surface or whether it's underground. And the reason why they chose to make all the water in the state public is because water is life, and when we start turning it into personal property, the way we do furniture and minerals and all sorts of other equipment, we end up making serious mistakes with this substance that is incredibly important. It would be as if we were to say that air is personal property. It's just not possible, and Oregon's not a state that does that. Water League strongly supports this rulemaking revision. We have our critiques, and we have our comments, and we have our opinions about what needs to be fixed, and I'll get into one or two of them, but, but this is, and I may have hinted at this earlier, a bit late coming, and better late than ever. You know, when was the, when was the right time we should have passed these rules? Probably 20 years ago, and the next best time is today. So the first thing I would like to say is that the following statistics are supplied by you, the state of Oregon, they're not mine, and we saw some of them tonight, and we saw that irrigation uses 82% of all the water that gets pumped out of the ground that comes from aquifers. That's not unusual, that's pretty much like many different places in semi-arid or Mediterranean climates where water is needed for irrigation. It also happens to be the case, according to the Oregon Department of Agriculture, that 80% of all agricultural products are exported out of Oregon. So that means is that a lot of the irrigation water that's being pumped out of the ground is also being shipped out of state in what's called virtual water exports. All the domestic wells, as we saw earlier tonight, there's almost a quarter million of them use just 4% of the groundwater. So when somebody complains about a farmer's market vendor who is using their domestic well to irrigate their half acre crop, it's just, for 70 years, it was never enforced, and the reason why is because frankly, it's a public relations disaster, and the 4% of water use that comes out of the ground for those domestic wells is just infinitesimal. The public water supplies that service every municipality in Oregon account for only 10% of groundwater use. That is a very small amount, given the fact that 85% of all Oregonians pretty much live in municipalities of one form or another. The 4.2 million Oregonians go about their day and directly use a total of 14% of the water, and that's, that's saying something, that, that, you know, the population is large and they just don't use that much water every day, and one of the points I'll make is that since 80% of Oregon's agricultural products are exported, we don't eat that irrigation. We don't. In fact, actually, people outside the state do. The correlation between population and irrigated acres has never existed. In the early years of Oregon, irrigated acres grew 50% faster than the population did, and then in the past 75 years, the population outpaced irrigation by a factor of nine, which is almost an order of magnitude. So the population in Oregon and irrigation have absolutely no correlation. The fact is that irrigation is an industrial practice that uses water for exports far more than it does for Oregon's 4.2 million residents. We get our food from California and other places across the nation. This is an important point to consider when we want to push back against the falsehood that is actually in this rules package that says, quote, "Because everyone relies on food and clothing to the extent the rulemaking impacts agriculture, everyone should be impacted equally." That's just false. There is, this is a dangerous misrepresentation, because irrigation has drained Oregon's aquifers, not domestic well users, not municipalities where 85% of the population lives, and not by the residents who get hungry three times per day. Therefore, we consider these very important, and dare I say crucial, rules that will limit the allocation of future water rights to account for the fact that groundwater has been over allocated in every basin in Oregon. We must not punish domestic well users and municipalities by preventing them from access to water for the humans that they need to live every day. We will never rain enough water from cities to conserve our way out of water scarcity, and telling cities that they can't get new water rights because irrigation used up the vast amount of groundwater is grossly inequitable. The governor has called for ending the housing crisis by building new homes and apartment buildings. We cannot expect to address our housing crisis if these rules make water the limiting factor. I submit and I stand upon the statement that growing animal porridge crops and other non-human foods for export is not now and never will be as important as ensuring that our communities have plentiful, plentiful and fresh, clean water. These rules must have a carve-out for allowing new water rights for all municipalities, because the volume of water that they use is so small compared to irrigation, and the value of their water use is so much greater than irrigation, especially the export crops that effectively ship our groundwater out of state. Thank you very much for the time to be here today and share this information, and despite our strident, if not strong, critique on some of these issues, we support this rulemaking unequivocally. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bob Hunter. I'm a resident of Jackson County, and I'm here receiving this to indicate that I strongly support the department's proposed groundwater allocation rule revisions. These necessary revisions are long overdue, given the fact that our water resources are over allocated, and we're going to climate change, it's about time. The department is more into management than just pure allocation. I think these rules are a good step in trying to establish sustainable management of our groundwater. I won't go into, because I thought it was a great presentation on the benefits of these rules. Basically, by protecting our groundwater resources and managing them in a stable manner, it protects the existing current users of groundwater and existing water rights, and it protects senior water rights because of the hydraulic connection, as was stated, and it also will help protect and give additional analysis to what impacts they're having on stream flows, and the groundwater, groundwater component to our stream flows are really extremely important to the efficient ecology of our streams. In the past, unfortunately, it was not unawful to the department to issue groundwater, new groundwater rights, not knowing what the hydraulic connection was, not knowing what impacts it would have on the aquifers, and as we've seen in many places in the state, this has resolved its problems, and I think these rules go a long way to make sure we don't exacerbate these problems in the future and have good management practices. So again, I commend the department for moving forward on these rules, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I'm going to apologize for recalling a couple of names. So Troy McGuire. No, okay, we read that then, so don't ask that again. And then Gary Sumrak, or some, you said, okay, thank you, sorry. And then I've got Nigel Von. Ruska, thank you. You got it. And then I had a Robin Lee, who was unsure, and then Julie Carte. You can go whichever order, it's up to you guys.
Thank you, McIntyre. Hello, my name is Nigel Varesca, a small farmer, artist of glass, and soccer coach, and a lover of freedom. See, it takes freedom to have harmony. When freedoms are stripped away, we lose quality control of our own lives, hence losing harmony. As my family grows on our small farm of 30 acres, with five grandchildren all under the age of six, with hopes and dreams of being self-sufficient on a regenerative organic farm, raising Dexter cows, chickens, and pigs, and most of all, the love for animals. With a growing population and a housing crisis and the lack of quality local foods, I suggest you rethink and table your motion for new rules until you understand the true impact of meeting our housing and quality food goals in the future. Limiting water use will only make reaching those housing goals and farming goals impossible. Last but not least, what about our well drillers? Would they lose jobs? Would it make their job more difficult? Would they lose revenue because of government overreach? Future farmers of America will be a lost term, well, at least in Future farmers of America will be a lost term, well, at least in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Julie Carte and I'm uh, uh, we live about on a small acreage about uh, three miles from here. And I just, I'm gonna echo a lot of the concerns that many people have brought up tonight. Um, I, to target a farms makes absolutely no sense. The state of Oregon, I feel like as part of its mission is to protect, is to make sure its people are fed. And yet, again, like Nigel was saying, to um, to target small farmers and even, and even family farms or um, these are not the people that are wasting water. So these are, these are people who are good stewards of the water and uh, make every effort to make sure that that resource is available year after year. Um, the cost involved for a small farmer or even a medium-sized farmer who basically doesn't have hardly any margin. And to tell them, I'm not sure what the fee is, I think it's well over $1,000 of the line. Um, and also the timeframe, uh, up to 18 months to be granted water rights. Uh, people cannot live 18 months without income. Um, I'd also, I also think the state needs to look at other, and I know we're not, I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I'm just wondering about uh, state, what the state of Oregon, um, the government water use. And is it surface water? Is it groundwater? Or is our, is our state capital landscaping their grounds at the expense of landowners? Um, and again, I have the concern about the marijuana growers as well that are very plentiful in our area. And it seems like, and I don't want to generalize, but um, this industry has, has, I think, decimated our pop, our population and especially our young people. And to look at a lot of the properties, these are not well-kept places. These are not people that are stewards of our land and our water. And again, as the young lady said from uh, from uh, from uh, from Josephine County, um, there is a, a clear con, uh, conflict of interest with the state who is driving a huge amount of income of that industry. So anyway, thank you very much that I was allowed to speak and um, thank you for holding this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, I've got Noah Robinson. That's the end of my list, so when he's done, I'll ask again if there's anybody else that wants to uh, provide comments.
Thank you very, very much for letting me comment. I'm uh, representing Senator Art Robinson. I work with him and also I'm a candidate for the Senate as well as select. I, I think as well, the rules should be halted and they should be investigated more carefully. We've been, what's been done for a hundred years has been working well. Um, so sure we have local problems. The marijuana people are a big issue in our area. They're all over the place. They take water illegally and they do cause problems. So that is, I think, a, a large part of what's going on in these some areas. This food industry, one of the most critical industries for our state. People can't live, people in the cities, they can't live without food. They depend on farmers. And just to make it more difficult for those farmers to get the water they need is an enormous mistake. Um, in, in terms of the amount of food that's exported, yes, food is exported, food is imported. It's not that much water going in and out. But the food industry is critical and that's what these, that's what these farmers do. They provide the food for Oregonians. As far as I noticed, there's some comments about climate change. Um, this is an issue we studied. There's a similar problem there. Computer models trying to model things too carefully very often doesn't work. Um, you can look at the computer model and find out that they're very flawed. They don't produce, they don't, they don't follow the angle of data. And if you look at uh, rainfall throughout the state, as the time climate has naturally gotten warmer over the last hundred years, rainfall has not gone down, it's gone up a little bit. So I don't expect that there's going to be a drop in future rainfall. Um, so these things need to be halted. We need to look at it more carefully. I'm also a farmer. I've lived in Cape Junction for more than 40 years. Our family has a farm there. Um, when the, when they halted new surface water rights, you could get a new water right on, of the creek, that we never went back. And now those rights are very valuable because if you lose it, you don't get it back. There's no way to get it back. And I'm very much afraid that if the state moves in this direction, it makes it more difficult for uh, for farmers to drill wells, make it very difficult. It's not gonna go the other way. We're not gonna, we're, we're gonna be stuck with that. And it's gonna be very detrimental to the state and the economy. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Hey Ben, is there anybody else that had signed up on that clipboard out there? I forgot to check that. No? Okay. Um, so I've called everybody that's signed up. Is there anybody else here tonight that would like to provide a comment? Okay, I think what I'll do now, because we've still got a bit of time, I think I'll, I'll pause the recording and give folks a little bit more time to show up. Maybe we'll go till at least eight, I think. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna stop the recording for now and then I'll, I'll resume again at eight. So thank you, everybody. Hey, it is now eight o'clock and there's no one else who wishes to comment, so the hearing is now adjourned.